Good evening. It is five forty AM on Tuesday, August first, two thousand and twenty-three, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, eleven twenty-three West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Chairman John Hastings presiding. Also present are Commissioners Most Uncle Slate Camp, Amelia Boyd, Ben McQuarren, and Wayne Benner. Commissioner Grant Simmons is absent this evening. If everyone will please stand, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any general announcements from Commissioners this evening? Any from staff?
I have one quickly, Mr. Chair. Downtown waterfront phase two, the submissions were due from the three teams today, and we just received them over the last couple of hours. And we will have display boards available for the public to see and provide comment down at Farmer's Market this weekend between eight and twelve. And we'll also be down there the following Saturday, and we'll be releasing a schedule at the end of this week, too, for display here in City Hall. We've got one scheduled at the library, so we'll have something every day. It's just going to be different times, sometimes in the evening, so that people can see. And then they'll also be available online, and people will be able to provide comment that way as well. We have the updated schedule posted on our website, and teams will be doing a comprehensive presentation on their projects to the jury in the next couple of weeks as well, and those are open to the public. We'll be streaming them live, and they'll also be up on our YouTube channel, following those presentations, or people can come into council chambers as well. So there is a lot to see in just boards, and there's accompanied booklets that some of them I've seen are sixty-plus pages. So there's a lot of content, but at least the public can start with the visuals, and there's the opportunity to see the presentations as well.
And those, thank you. Those presentations before the jury, will the jury be here in person, or is that?
The jury will be here, so it will actually be set up just like tonight. So the jury will be up at the dais that day with teams presenting here, and then we will have the room open to the public. So just like coming in for a commission meeting or a council meeting, it'll be the same structure.
Okay. Excellent. Staff, any other? Announcements? Okay. Then just a quick announcement before we get started. For those in the chambers who would like to speak during the public hearing, we have two this evening, and if you wish to speak, you will need to complete a public, I mean, complete a sign-up form, which is available at the table by the back door there, and hand to staff. Please do not approach the clerk or staff up front here. You may hand your form to the staff seated at the table in the back. Please write legibly and include your first and last name on your form. You will also see options on the form to communicate whether you wish to speak in favor, are neutral, or are opposed to the request, and please check one of those boxes. The first item on tonight's agenda is approval of meeting minutes, and I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three special meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All abstain. I wasn't present.
Excellent. Thank you. Motion passes. And I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstention? Thank you. The next item on tonight's agenda is a public hearing and possible recommendation on the final draft of the comprehensive plan, city application number PCP three dash zero 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 one. A notice of public hearing was published in the Bonner County Daily Bee, the city's newspaper of record, on July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. I will now recite the order and procedure for the public hearing. First, we'll have an explanation of the subject of the hearing by city staff, then opening of the public hearing, at which time the public may provide testimony. Then we will close the public hearing, and the commission will deliberate. No new information may be provided after the hearing has been closed, with questions directed only to city staff during deliberation. For the record, any written comments received in time were included in the meeting packet or otherwise provided to the commission. I appreciate your continued patience as we get through all of this information and notes for the record, and at this time, I would like to ask for your specific attention as I recite the city's general rules for participation during public meeting. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to the commission or to staff. Do not approach the dais also. And now that the meeting is underway, please do not approach the clerk or other staff up here at the front tables as this disrupts the meeting. You may inquire of staff in the back of the room who can provide assistance if needed. Remarks shall be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to any single member. The person speaking shall face and address only the commission and shall not turn and address the staff or members of the audience. Members of the public are asked to please exercise self-control, to participate in our meeting in an orderly manner, and to focus on the specific issues at hand and avoid personalizing the debate. And those speaking shall not make personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks to any member of the commission, staff, or public. Disorderly or boisterous conduct, including loud, threatening, or abusive language, whistling, speaking out of turn, clapping, or other similar acts which disturb or disrupt or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting, is not allowed. I will have additional procedural information to impart before the hearing is open to take public testimony, but at this time, I will yield the floor to city planner Amy Twetton for an introduction and explanation of the hearing subject.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, Commission, it's been a long time coming, but we've gotten to our public hearing. I will begin the presentation, and then I will be turning it over to Miriam McGilfrey from Logan Simpson, as she has been with this planning process from the beginning. So again, this is the public hearing on the final draft of the plan. The hearing was scheduled pursuant to Idaho Code six seven six five oh eight for the Planning and Zoning Commission to receive public testimony on the final draft of the comprehensive plan and corresponding land use map, and to consider recommendation to City Council on plan adoption. The plan incorporates the seventeen required plan components pursuant to Idaho Code, and that those include property rights, population, school facilities, and transportation, economic development, land use, natural resources, hazardous areas, public services, facilities, utilities, transportation, recreation, special areas and sites, housing, community design, agriculture, implementation, national interest, electronic transmission corridors, and public airport facilities. Again, the comprehensive plan is the primary planning policy document for the city. It is a long-term guiding vision. It is a roadmap that combines the community's ideas and values with data and analysis to determine how the city will grow over the next twenty years, and it shapes decisions related to new development, redevelopment, city programs, infrastructure, and services. Leading up to this hearing, the planning process included numerous public engagement opportunities beginning in the fall of two thousand and twenty, and those included visioning events, community choices and priorities workshops, a visioning survey, housing and neighborhood workshops, and a survey, and a draft plan review public workshop. The plan is organized into twelve chapters. It draws from incorporates through reference other recently adopted master plans and incorporated public engagement, and those plans also have additional engagement. On the table on the right under plan structure, those chapters draw heavily from other adopted plans, and many of those are listed in the green box. So Community Character and Design included the Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Plan, as well as reference to the Urban Forestry Management Plan. Multi-modal Transportation, Chapter Six, draws from the Multimodal Transportation Plan, Parks, Recreation, and Trails are from the Parks and Recreation Plan heavily, and then the Jobs and Economic Development draw heavily from the Leland Report. We have received, and you have been provided, public comments on the draft plan from Reed Weber, Bonner County resident, John Gadda, city resident, Amy Flint, city resident Heather Flint, Chad O'Non, resident, and Janelle Shields, Bonner County resident. Just where we have come in the adoption process, the Planning and Zoning Commission first saw a rough draft March twenty-eighth. There were further revisions, and then they scheduled the draft was posted online, as well as the open house was scheduled. Out of that, there were additional changes incorporated, and those changes then went to the joint workshop between the commission and City Council. There are additional changes that came out of that that were reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, who ultimately scheduled the public hearing, which is where we are. The next step would be a recommendation to City Council and ultimately plan adoption. With that, I am going to turn it over to Miriam to go into a little more detail on the plan itself.
Wonderful. Thank you. So this is about four years in the making, and so I'm going to walk through a little bit more detail about what the plan includes and then essentially the differences between this draft and what has already been adopted in the two thousand and nine plan. Because this is an update of that plan, you'll notice that much of the timeless elements, a lot of the organizational elements of the two thousand and nine plan are carried forward, even though this document feels new and fresh and in a new format. And we do have some updated goals and policies, particularly reflecting the great planning work that has been done in the city over the last couple of years. So, my screen. Okay, here we go. So Chapter One is a lot of the information that Amy just presented, understanding how the plan is organized, how to use the document, what is a comprehensive plan, the required planning components based on Idaho State Statute, and the relevant plans that have gone into this comprehensive plan update. Chapter Two is a community vision and reinstating and reinforcing the direction and kind of the compass that will guide planning decisions into the future. So this is an overall citywide community vision statement on the left, and it is supported by five values, five pillars that are grounded in the City Council Strategic Plan pillars as well. So the whole plan itself has has these integrated throughout. You'll see in each chapter, as we go through the goals and policies, we hearken back to which of these goals and/or which of these values, I should say, are relevant and appropriate and reflected in the goals that we have presented in this draft plan. Chapter Three is the Community Character and Design chapter. These are the high-level goals that are included in this chapter. Underneath each of the goals, we have a number of objectives that support that goal. So there's a lot more detail that you'll find in the plan that I will not be presenting to you today, but just to give a high-level understanding of what's changed, we want to make sure that the two thousand and twenty-one Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Plan was integrated, related to the Arts, Historic Preservation, and Identity aspects of that plan. We do have a new goal that is Goal Five here about gateways and gathering places, understanding that there are certain components that create a sense of community, a sense of place. We also have integrated the two thousand and twenty-two Urban Forestry Management Plan with strengthened recommendations for an urban forestry goal. Goal number three. In Chapter Four, we go into land use and growth, and we have expanded the focus of neighborhoods and mixed-use development, really to provide more flexibility and understanding that there are areas in the community that are stable, historic even, and will not change, but we will, there are areas for opportunity of introducing different types of uses. There's also a focus on quality places and livability. So looking at the design aspects of how we build these places, what the streetscape design is, what is, how do we build public spaces? What are the multimodal connectivity concerns and balancing uses? We also have goals and objectives in this chapter that coordinate infrastructure and development within the area of city impact, making sure that we are planning into the future and coordinating that regionally. And then looking at efficient land uses through redevelopment, infill, and appropriate cluster and density solutions throughout the city. Included in this chapter, we have an updated future land use map. So the goals and policies found in the entirety of the comprehensive plan is intended to be embodied geographically in this future land use map. Now, the two thousand and nineteen, or the twenty, excuse me, two thousand and nine plan categorized their land use map with context areas. We have since then translated those context areas and updated them into more traditional use-based categories, so that they're a little bit more user-friendly to understand just face value of what types of uses we'll see around the town, regardless of, or even before you dig into what the description of those areas are. We'll note that the public, quasi-public category is new. This just helps to note where some of those public uses, schools, county buildings, city buildings, the airport, for instance, that are not likely to change. Also included in this chapter is a map of the area of city impact. You'll notice that this still includes context areas from that two thousand and nine plan that is due to proposed ACI boundary and renegotiation with the county to understand the appropriate uses and the boundary that that ACI will encompass into the future. So that's pending. Chapter Five goes into Housing and Neighborhoods. As Amy mentioned, this does rely heavily on the findings of that Leland Report, the Housing and Economics Analysis. Just to understand the gaps and current conditions in the housing market. And I will note that one of the new goals in this plan is the Housing Affordability Goal, Goal Number Two. Even back in two thousand and nineteen, housing affordability had been top of mind, and we heard quite a bit from the public through our public engagement process about housing affordability and the challenges around that. So this is, it was a a big key theme throughout the planning process, and we thought it was very important to include and make that a robust focus of this new update. The Multimodal Transportation, Chapter Six, does hearken back to that two thousand and one Multimodal Transportation Plan? And it does, so it integrates all the guidance from that multimodal plan and includes some of the kind of reworking and strengthening the original goals of walkability, balancing users, modes, and affordability of transportation options. Parks, Recreation, Trails, Chapter also goes back to the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that was recently completed and integrates the outcomes of that. The Public Facility Services and Utilities Chapter was is kind of a catch-all chapter in some sense that includes policies and goals about the physical infrastructure that we have in town, as well as the educational infrastructure, health infrastructure. And so this is a pretty robust chapter, I would say, in terms of what it encompasses. You'll notice that we have two goals that are specific to education, and we found that it was important to be specific about these two different goals and the objectives underneath them to understand that partnering with educational partners is really is really key to understanding how we're looking at a school capacity, school facilities, but then moving beyond, you know, K through twelve education, what does lifelong learning look like for city residents? So understanding technical schools, understanding the importance of library services, that kind of thing. We added a goal about responsive government, number eight, understanding that it is a key pillar of our direction, our vision articulated in Chapter Two, to really be a responsive government, which means bringing everyone to the table, so everyone has a voice and is valued and represented. I guess we skipped over, we added a goal about solid waste management, we added a goal about public health and access to health resources. So we did really make this a much more robust chapter than it was in two thousand and nine. Jobs Education, or excuse me, Jobs and Economic Development, again, goes back to the findings from that Leland Housing and Economic Analysis Report. We did add a goal about resilient year-round economy, understanding that the ebbs and flows of seasonal workforce really present serious issues, not only with housing, but, you know, folks that need to have two jobs, three jobs, what that looks like, and understanding that the end goal is to really have a little bit more stability economically. We also added a new goal about innovation, Goal Number Two. And that goes back to representing the great talent and local entrepreneurs that have found Sandpoint as their home and really built up that industry. And we wanted to support that into the future. And then understanding that Sandpoint's position in the regional economy and as the county seat, you know, Sandpoint is really a hub for a lot of things in the region, and so making sure that we're coordinating, collaborating, and recognizing that we that Sandpoint doesn't live in a vacuum, that regional economy is just as important to to connect with. The Airport Facilities Chapter was actually updated in two thousand and nineteen at the start of this whole update process in response to the state statute requirement to have an airport facilities chapter specifically. And since two thousand and nineteen, we haven't updated the chapter in any substantial way. Chapter Eleven is the Natural Resources and Hazard section. We did expand the Resource Protection Goals and split them out into three. I believe the two thousand and nine plan only has two goals, and it really bundled water resources, you know, riparian resources, other types of environmental and natural resources. And so we wanted to make sure that we could specify in this chapter to give every to get a little bit more into detail and recognize that that you can't really bundle them under a single goal, or else it becomes meaningless, and then you can really dive into more specifics and direction under the objectives. We recognize the ecological importance of the water sheds and the riparian habitats. We did integrate the Bonner County Wildfire Protection Plan and the County Hazard Mitigation Plan to bolster that hazard protection goal. And we integrated more energy conservation and sustainability standards, including a new dark sky objective. So that goes through all of the topic-specific and kind of goal objective chapters. We do have a bookend at the end of the plan for implementation that goes through plan management, development review and consistency, and then a high-level understanding of implementation and programs, which could include these six zoning updates, supporting plans and studies, programs and services, capital and projects, partnerships and agreements, and new funding sources, the details of which are actually being, were integrated into Appendix A, which is a really robust implementation table with a lot more detail of what that implementation strategy looks like, who and who are the partners, who are the leads and who are the partners to implement that? What is the timing of that? And so at the appendix implementation table really can be a a tool for staff to look at every year through budgeting priorities to understand work plans. So it's really intended to, by taking it out of the Chapter Twelve Implementation of the comprehensive plan and putting it into an appendix, it really becomes a much more useful tool, both for staff, planning commission, and for the public to be able to track the progress and implementation of these different strategies. So that is actually the end of my kind of overview of the plan, but I'm of course available to answer any questions if I've raised any as part of my my presentation. Thank you.
Ms. Twain, do you have anything to add to the presentation before we ask questions?
No, feel free.
Okay. Commissioners, if you have any questions? And for the record, I don't know if you need to say this, but Commissioner Dunkle had to step out at about five fifty, and we'll see when he returns. Yes, Commissioners, any questions? I have a couple, if no one else wants to go first, and maybe these are answered in the implementation chapters, which we didn't go over in detail today. And I just said, Chapter Four, there was a land use goal, and it just said that we would coordinate. And does the implementation chapter specify who that coordination is supposed to be with? Do we need to specify it more? I mean, I'm just curious, is, we don't want it to just be city staff coordinating, we need county staff and probably industry and private and public, and does that come up in the implementation? Do we think it should?
Well, under Chapter Four, there is the implementation of the ACI agreement with the county and starting that discussion, but we don't have anything broader than that.
It was specifically Goal Number Five in Chapter Four that I took the notes on. I don't know if you see that. Maybe you can pull that up if possible.
Chapter Four. Goal Five, Chapter Four.
It was. This is looking very different than Miriam's slideshow. Slide down to the very bottom, if I could see that. Oh, that, yeah, that's where it was, but that was, that was, this is different than what was in the prior slideshow.
I remember right chapter.
But I don't, I'm just asking. It's not, I'm just want to make sure that we.
It's not the goal dealing with area of city impact?
No, I'm not seeing it here at all. And the organization just must be different. Slide down to Goal Five again, and I'll just see if it's there, but maybe it's nothing we need to. I just wanted to make sure that the coordination, yeah, so this is different than what we saw in Miriam was presenting. So, so there's a different organization to it, so the point I'm talking about is not here.
It was on Miriam's slide.
Yes. Yeah.
Miriam, do you want to pull up? Miriam, do you want to pull up yours?
And while we're doing that, Mr. Chair, if you could just.
Oh, for the record. Commissioner Dunkle has returned at six o'clock.
Uh, there it is.
There, yeah, yeah, that's what I was talking about. This is uh, area of city impact. And maybe it was just different in the other one, but here that number five, location, infrastructure, character development is coordinated. That's what I'm wondering if we need to in define who we coordinate with, or at least.
Well, that, that is the discussion that we will be renegotiating the ACI with Bonner County. So there is, in the implementation table, there is a specific.
Um. And is that the only other jurisdiction that is involved in this as opposed to any other municipalities?
The county is who we would negotiate with the ACI.
ACI.
Right.
Correct. So we're covered.
I, right, yeah.
Okay.
In terms of the.
That's all I wanted to be.
Yes.
Clear as to who we were coordinating with. I had one other question, if that's okay. Uh, and that was in the chapter six multimodal and it didn't get, again, it did not come up here. And without seeing a copy of the uh, multimodal plan in front of us. Um, I know that that earlier plan, it actually called for some physical separation between some of those pedestrian, non-motorized paths and, and the motorized vehicles. Is that still incorporated in that multimodal plan? Cause I, it doesn't show up here and these are the, you know, thirty thousand feet goals, looking down at big picture stuff, but I'm just curious if that is still in that multimodal plan.
As if it's referencing the original.
It wasn't an earlier plan. I don't know when that one was updated and I just know that's, that's, that's a.
It hasn't been updated since it was adopted, so.
So then it, then it would still be in there that that's an objective, that those pedestrian paths sometimes be physically separated from uh, motorized transportation. Excellent.
Right.
Generally, we're trying to do that for purposes, not just of safety, but for maintenance too. So that's what even the project on division is about, trying to get separation on that pathway. So that when we're clearing snow in the winter time, we're not clearing it onto the pedestrian or bicycle pathway.
Excellent. Any other questions from commissioners for staff?
No, I think we've uh, spent a lot of time, had some questions have been answered, so.
Along the way, yes, yeah. Uh, okay. So then we are now prepared to proceed with the public hearing. Uh, if you're participating on Zoom, do we have some Zoom participants this evening?
Yes, we've got three.
Excellent. And wish to speak, you will need to have a working microphone and on your phone or computer. When your name is called, you will see a prompt on your screen asking if you would like to unmute and you will need to unmute uh, yourself in order to be heard. As announced earlier, those here in the chamber who would like to speak will need to complete a sign-up form. You may still do that, they're in the back table there. Uh, and hand it to staff at the back table who will then bring it up to the clerk. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. City policy provides that the presiding officer may allow time to be gifted during a public hearing. And I will allow this option for this evening. If you are present here in the room and would like to gift your time to someone else who is also present here in the room, you may do so. The person gifting their time may do so only once and the person receiving gifted time may be re- may receive only one gift for a total time of up to six minutes. If you are gifted time, please state as much when you are approaching the dais. The public hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, can you please call the first person to testify?
Greg Flint.
Hello, my name is Greg Flint. I've lived in and loved this county since ninety-one. For the last ten years, I've been privileged to live at the corner of Forest and Poplar Streets. Some of you will know the old Nizzoli House. It's a hundred-year-old property. On this property, there are seven huge cedar trees, uh, eight to almost ten feet in diameter. Uh, four of them along the Poplar property line and three forming a a giant beautiful triad in the middle of the property. On this property, there's also a hundred and fifty-year-old apple tree, hundred-year-old grapevine. Uh, some, I don't know, fifty-year-old apple trees, plum trees, cherry trees. Uh, and a pear tree that's amazing. Um. I live there as sort of a groundskeeper. I get to prune and care for the trees. I get to pull the weeds and uh, do stonework on the property, build a stone patio and other things. That's my former lifelong trade. Uh, new owners as of two years ago uh, want to have me keep on doing what I'm doing and taking care of the place. Um, and are actually doing work to make that more possible. They have other plans for the property involving the building of some rental housing. Their initial plans called for doing that and removing all the trees. I wrote him a letter urging them to let me offer them a vision of a way to create the needed housing and keep the trees. And uh, I was directed to Reed Weber, who ca- jumped right on it and came out and we did design something really beautiful that does keep the trees and gives um, excellent rental housing, far more desirable than the other plan. Um. And the owners like what we've done and are open to us continuing to develop this plan into something approvable and buildable. Uh, we are running into it is one, one resistance in the, in the city's requirement of a twenty-five-foot setback before the beginning of any garage or carport. Uh, which would put us right in the central triad of cedars where I built a.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt, yes, but your time is up. Was there a real poignant little statement?
My, 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 my point is, I would like the city's plan to, to include the recommended uh, tree preservation goals, implementation, definition, uh, et cetera, as submitted by um, my daughter.
Okay.
Heather Flint Chato.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you for your testimony. Madam Clerk, who's next?
John Gaddis.
Good evening. My name is John Gaddis. I'm a, I'm a resident of Sandpoint for many years now. I'm also a certified arborist and a forester, so I can speak with some authority on the urban forest and I'm, I would like to see stronger language dedicated in our comp plan towards tree preservation. Yeah, trees fit four of the five goals for our community vision. That's the culture, the economy, sustainable development and livability. Four out of five trees are integral to to those parts of our community vision, as stated in the comp plan here drafted. And so I think, you know, I, I have written comments and, and basically I've been working with Heather, with Greg Flint's daughter as well. And so I'm not asking you to invent new language. We're supplying language you can freely copy and paste from. And I'd like to see you guys discuss strengthening preservation guidelines in the comp plan. So the comp plan currently just refers repeatedly to the urban forest management plan, which is if you read it here, I've spent fifty dollars of my own money to have it printed out in color. So I read it twice, cover to cover. And um, you know, it's repeatedly says it's only about city trees right away in parks. So this comp plan is not just about city-owned trees. This is about this whole, all the urban forests in the city limits. So let's expand and get into, yes, privately owned trees and how we can incentivize those efforts to keep those in place. All right, not this, not fees for removal, anything like that. And I'm not asking for actions either. I understand that it's a comp plan, it's not an action plan necessarily. We get into implementation in chapter twelve, so you could flesh some things out, but um, you know, this comp plan should underpin the urban forest efforts, not just, it needs to be the foundation that things like an urban forest management plan are based on, not just deferring to this, which also, by the way, is a five-year document. It says in here, this is a five-year document. So, so we're, we're referring to a temporal plan, a management plan in this ten-year or even twenty-year vision statement. So let's get a little bit more solid. I would like some commitment. And but of course, with commitments comes accountability and that's tough. I understand. So it's not easy. But Heather is a professional planner, as are multiple people in this audience and on staff. So um, I think you can do a little better. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Jeremy Grimm.
Thank you.
Jeremy Grimm, um, former Sandpoint Planning Director, two thousand seven to two thousand fifteen. Residence in two thousand seven. Uh, Region One Representative on the Idaho Economic Advisory Council. Uh, future candidate for mayor of Sandpoint. And uh, I just want to speak to four things in the comp plan that I hope you can uh, refocus and direct some additional uh, work on to. First is prioritizing public spaces for city residents. That would include city beach and what has become of our parks, which are now transformed into regional sports complexes, serving the entire county. I think it's uh, important that our parks, the focus, uh, there's a focus of our parks for city residents and city residents should be prioritized in our parks. Two, our economy, I think this section needs to be reworked. Um, time and time again, you hear the director of the chamber, council president and others speak of us as a resort city. We don't want to be a resort city. I think you should survey your residents and understand if they want to be a resort city. Resort cities are typified by low wage, seasonal work, without benefits. Um, huge impacts on infrastructure and resort cities are not what we want to become. This is a future guidance document. Our community right now and our economy is not based on tourism. If you look at the facts and the numbers of jobs, our economy is based on a much more diverse, broader economy, and that's what we should be focusing on. Three, uh, the area of city impact. As growth occurs west and north of town, I think you should absolutely include language about negotiating development impact fees with the county so that the city of Sandpoint can collect impact fees for growth that's occurring in the area of city impact. This is legal and it's done in other areas. And finally, I think there's fairly meager public input and I would recommend that you direct or find funding or volunteers to do door hangers throughout the city. Um, with a survey, we did this when I did the comp plan in two thousand seven to two thousand nine to really understand what the public feels about uh, the changes and the direction and the focus of the plan. So with that, thanks for your hard work, for the time you put in, and I look forward to uh, participating in this as it goes forward.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Molly O'Reilly.
Hi, I'm Molly O'Reilly. Thank you for serving. Uh, you put in a lot of work as planning and zoning commissioners and I'm well aware of that. On land use, um, the ACI is the issue du jour, but we should be coordinating with all our neighboring cities and Bonner County on growth and transportation uh, standardly and that implementation chapter could be really strengthened in that regard because what happens in Kootenay, Pandare and Dover really affects us an awful lot. If Dover doesn't have any place to shop, guess what we have in the way of traffic? Under community identity, we've got some wonderful signs up that people refer to quite often. Sandpoint is a walking town. I would like to see that in there someplace as part of our identity. And thank you for your work and trees are part of sustainability. They should um, be in that chapter as well and and yes, we can, we can strengthen what we do and we can plant more. We used to have neighbor woods, which planted street trees and helped our, our urban forest be um, more age diverse. But we haven't had that in recent years and um, it would be good to see something like that come back. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Reed Weber.
Good evening, everyone. Um. So dear commissioners, I am here as a local architect and I grew up in Sandpoint at a young age, moved away for college and high school, moved back to uh, live in this community for indefinitely. So um, I just wanted to discuss some of these ideas here. So um, I wanted to respectfully request the planning commission and staff support recommended tree preservation goals, implementation and definition of heritage trees as proposed, as proposed by Heather Flint Chato and John Gaddis. This request builds upon the current comprehensive plan draft. Chapter five, goal three, to maintain and enhance neighborhood tree canopies. As our city grows, development pressure is increasing. Many cities are experiencing severe loss of urban forests and heritage trees without any safeguards. Trees in Sandpoint have a significant value historically, culturally, environmentally and economically, and without additional more specific policy goals. The preservation of, of our urban forest is a goal in vague terms only. And places in Sandpoint are at risk of signi- significant losses to our urban tree canopy and degraded qual- quality of life. Uh, I support adding the additional tree preservation goals and priority actions such as funding or incentives and heritage, heritage tree programs, which are based on best practices by other jurisdictions. These would include incentivizing landowners to join a voluntary heritage tree program. Um, implement a comprehensive and accurate heritage tree identification system to pinpoint and protect these essential assets. Encourage tree surveys and mapping initiatives and ensure their inclusion in the plan, planning process. Um, in addition, would also, I would work, um, best practice would allow for reasonable adjustment, adjustments to setbacks when considering heritage trees. Adding a policy goal would enable developers to work creatively while safeguarding these valuable resources. As an example of how this policy could maintain and enhance neighborhood tree canopies, as you heard from Greg, I've been working with, on a design of a duplex over the past few months on a property filled with these historic cedar trees and uh, fruit trees in the area. And after spending weeks reworking a design, kind of trying to work with around these giant cedars in this duplex, we found out to kind of achieve both the goals of affordable construction and preserving these trees that the zoning setbacks would allow one or the other to kind of, to coexist. And so in this instance, as one example, by adjusting the setback of the carport in this case by say forty percent, um, both the trees and the housing could work together. So in conclusion, in conclusion, we must be proactive and striking a balance between progress and environmental preservation and create stronger policy to work with, within our planning and zoning code to do so. Um, I urge this to be included in that.
Mr. Chairman, that is three minutes.
Yes. Thank you much.
Jane Fritz.
I'm Jane Fritz. I've lived in Bonner County for forty-four years and half of those years in the Sandpoint city limits. Currently, I live just outside of the city on Pine Street in Dover, which I do not understand is not an ACI with the city of Sandpoint because I have seen so much growth in the last eight years on our west side of um, Pine Street. Just down from the parks, down near Pine Street Woods, up from Pine Streets. It, it's just so much is happening in the west end of town and I don't think you realize it. I'm a writer, radio producer, documentarian and environmental. I'm a writer, radio producer, documentarian and environmental podcaster. I'm going to give this person my cards because I invite you to listen to a podcast. That was funded by the Idaho Humanities Council and Idaho Forest Group. Um, called People in Trees. It's two half hours. They're enjoyable listening and if you get on our website, missweaver.org, which is a nonprofit. You'll hear not only voices of Idahoans and Montanans, but indigenous voices from the Nespers tribe. About trees. Um, I could speak on several things on the comprehensive plan parks. Because I think uh we have a very uncreative management of parks, in particular having to do with wildlife like geese. Um, I could speak about airports and living a mile from it. Um, the increasing air traffic and low flying of many planes and jets. Is just incredible how much it's grown. Um, the noise is remarkable if you live west of town. I could speak about um pesticide use in the lake. By the seasons adjacent to Sandpoint City Beach. But I am going to support and be a voice for the trees. And I do support uh John Gaddis's and Reed Weber's and Heather Lanchado's. Proposition about preservation. I want to just take the last half minute to talk about two. Trees in this town that break my heart. One is the red maple on the corner of. Oak and what is that fourth? Um, by Farman Park, that was a healthy, incredible heritage tree that even has a little insignia around its neck. Um, that was destroyed virtually by the city of Sandpoint with concrete around its base. It continues to die, uh, needs pruning, but it's just despicable. What has happened to many of our heritage trees.
Mr. Chairman, that is three minutes.
Oh, I could tell me, tell you more. Just one thing I want to say is look at fur and division. At the end of fur on the west side of Division and what happened to all those beautiful trees to build four houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have others in the room?
Just a reminder to those on Zoom, if you would like to speak at this time in the public hearing, please raise your hand on Zoom. We do have some individuals. Uh, first up is. Aaron Qualls. Aaron, if you could please state your name and whether you live in uh City Limits of Sandpoint.
Hello, yes, can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Excellent, yes, Aaron Qualls, resident of City of Sandpoint. I should probably disclose that uh. I'm a professional planning consultant, but I'm not here representing anyone. I'm just here as a concerned citizen and. Uh, formerly I was the Planning and Community Development Director for the City of Sandpoint and I worked on the comp plan in its early stages. And thank you all for all your work on this and thank you, Marion, for uh carrying it forward this far. Um. This is a very important document, as uh Miriam and Amy mentioned, it is the guiding uh policy document for the city. And uh it is the only plan that a city or county is required to have in in uh the state of Idaho. As the name implies, it is to be comprehensive, considering all things, housing, land use, transportation, utilities, et cetera, as Amy pointed out. And I also wanted to point out, there's a, there's a really key policy uh difference from this plan. Uh, to the existing 2009 comp plan, which has an existing policy. Uh, that uh we call goal CD2. Policy E, deny extension of urban service in ACI for low-density development. Um, there was a previous version of the goals and policies uh that I worked on with Miriam and and uh staff at the time. Uh, to retain uh this policy or a resemblance of it, and there's very good reasons uh for doing so. There is a recent unfortunate case study um that is going to be heard by the uh Bonner County um. By Bonner County uh that was heard once before. And it is for a subdivision in Kootenay ACI uh that. No coordination, uh as I understand, happened between the city of Sandpoint and the city of Kootenay. And uh essentially with the provision of the will serve letter that was provided to City of Kootenay. That I would say is in violation of this existing policy. Will enable a 117 lot subdivision that uh will have no street connections, no sidewalks, nothing for parks, require no building permits. And provide zero tax revenue to the city of Kootenay. It will be 10,000 square foot lot. Uh, which will do very little for the housing needs of uh our area. And if there's a fire, there will only be one way out. And if a kid wants to walk to school or anywhere, they'll have to use uh the street and uh as proposed currently, the highway. And this was made possible only because Sandpoint decided to provide service. Into this unincorporated, unincorporated area without annexation. And by doing so, it is encouraging low-quality uh sprawling development that will be unsustainable um. For many, many years to come. These policy decisions have long, long range impact. I would urge you to reconsider. Uh, adding that policy back in. I also want to express my support for those who testified about trees and finally. Um, the title of the document, I would suggest changing from uh engaged standpoint comprehensive plan to Sandpoint comprehensive plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have other Zoom participants?
Yes, one second. Uh, Heather Flint Chato.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Maybe speak up just a little louder.
Hi there.
That's good.
How's that? Great. My name, my name is Heather Flint Chato and I'm an urban planner and environmental designer. I have a small environmental design and master planning firm here in Portland and you might wonder why I'm weighing in. Um, on this, these issues. It's because my family has lived in the area for about 30 years. And I have uh loved this area so much. That I don't want it to have the same impacts as many cities in the Northwest, which um have had rapid growth and development. And so I am passionately speaking to you, not on behalf of one property. Um, the property my dad spoke to you about is just a perfect example. And this isn't about any one, you know, spot zoning or any kind of approach like that. This is about a bigger picture goal. That if you. Have this moment and opportunity, I strongly encourage you to take it and strengthen your policies around urban forestry. Because there is going to be a very little chance to respond when the growth. And real estate development boom happens the way it did here. Um, for, just for an example. In a, in five years between 2015 and 2020, Portland lost 823 acres uh for urban forestry. And the majority of that was in residential neighborhoods, 523 acres of that was in the residential neighborhoods. So. You are seeing that development coming now, but lack the tools to be able to really respond. You have a few references that I think could be strengthened and we've given you a, a start at the language. Um, in chapter 11, I think uh goal one B has a, a provision for flexibility. And um basically allowing for uh the division of land, the siting and design of buildings and other improvements. To reduce the impact of development on environmentally sensitive areas. By adding a similar alignment in existing neighborhoods. We've proposed that you add language that supports reasonable adjustments to placement of structures and setbacks to advance preservation of heritage trees. That small goal could create that connection. And it gives you an opportunity to define heritage trees in the comprehensive plan now. That's such a critical piece that no matter where you are with programs and future implementation. You have the opportunity to highlight what matters to you now. And a heritage tree criteria from City of Spokane is a great, and and Moscow are very similar. Has historical significance, a person placed for event, attain significant size and height, caliber or canopy, significant aesthetic qualities. Prominently visible, has rare horti- horticultural value. These are really critical goals. I'd like to also support the addition of door hangers for public engagement and the concerns raised by Aaron Qualls and.
Mr. Chairman, that is three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Other speakers on Zoom?
If any other Zoom attendees would like to speak, please raise your hand at this time. There are no other speakers on Zoom.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the uh? Room this evening who has not spoken and would like to? Alrighty. Do commissioners have any additional questions for? Anyone at this time? We'll have, we'll deliberate later, but just if there's any immediate questions. If not, then the public hearing is now closed. No, no information may be provided and questions may be directed only to city staff during deliberation. So it's time to deliberate. What are your thoughts, commissioners?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I, I think it's, it's great, this input that we received. It's uh meaningful and impactful and I think it's, it's. Something that we should consider in, in the plan. Um, how we, we weave that into the current plan uh and and update or modify the goals, I think is some work that still needs to happen. Uh, I guess my, my question from like the city staff side of things is. Uh, we have another, we have another layer we have to go through with the, the city council and. Uh, do we have opportunities for modification after they've looked at it? Or do we need to do, would we need to make modifications now before it goes to the city council prior to any kind of approvals?
Um, my understanding is now's the time. Now, now would be the time if, because if it goes to city, we're saying we want to council, we want you to prove this the way it's written.
Right.
So we would make those modifications now or we would um provide staff more time. To add some of that language that we are, that we've, that we're considering.
I just didn't know if it was an iterative process is in that we say, here's the draft, there are some pending items which we list out. As these are things that we're considering based off of feedback. Let them go through their process because I'm sure there's going to be other things that there's going to come up with during that hearing. That we should incorporate in that overall update versus we take the time, do the update, that takes. A month or so maybe. I'm not sure if we have to repost for public comment. And then, then we get it to them. Then they go through their process, they get comments, we have to go back through the process. So now we're December, right? It's not sure how the overall iterative process would have to happen if we do make updates at this point in time.
Does staff any, have any input on what timing of some of those pathways might be?
Well, I would say that what you move forward to the city council should be your full recommendation. So if the commission has recommended changes at this time or you want to direct us. To work through uh the comments that we have received, bring back language to incorporate. Depending on the significance of the change, we may need to hold an additional public hearing if we change the plan. Um, so that would be an additional hearing at the Planning Commission. Um, but I don't think you should, unless you have the changes you want. Uh, tonight to move forward to city council, you should probably postpone action and give direction to staff. On changes that you would like to see.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes.
I think it's imperative that we do consider this a lot. Considering that it's, you know, on this, since I've served, this is the most, we've have eight people who have. Emailed, spoken um about this particular um subject. And I think it's something that we can't ignore personally, um, because this is important to Sandpoint. It's important to us. Uh, it's important to our um comprehensive plan. We are all about the environment, walkability, sustainability, the trees, the outdoors. Um, that's what makes this place so fantastic to live in. So um. I do, I do like this heritage tree. I mean, I have, John can attest, I have a few on my properties. That would be sad to, to see go. So I think that it's something that we need to encourage. With um future developers, future homeowners or current homeowners, whether or not. It's defining what a heritage tree or, you know, doing a, a tree count. I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but I think it's something that we need to take into deep consideration before moving this forward.
Thank you. Uh, question for city staff, during the update of the urban forestry plan, was there a comprehensive tree? Inventory taken? I know that they've done it in the past. I don't know how recently. Does anybody know?
Um, eh, yes, so we did, uh, an inventory was completed historically. Um, it has not been updated. And during the urban forestry master plan, we did a partial sample. Um, it, it was. Can't remember where the streets off the top of my head, but it was in the downtown core area and I believe south and east of Cedar. Um, so it was just a sample to give us a sample of what our existing can- canopy is um per the goals. Of um the recommendations for where we should be with canopy.
I'll just add one comment too, and just for the public and everybody else, and that was just that um. The change that we made to this plan from the old plan is that there would be an increase in the canopy. And that's, that's all that it was. Um, and we didn't know exactly, you know, the, the intent of the comp plan is not to be specific. Implementation might be more specific, but that the goal was there that the canopy would increase with whatever kind of um. Development was taking place. There was no mention of the notion of individual trees that have historical or cultural um value. Or, or anything else. One of the things that came up quite frequently in some of the comments that were given. Was the notion of uh protection from an urban heat island. And even though Sandpoint is a relatively small urban area, it still does have a, an urban heat island and, and this. Season, we're experiencing that a little bit stronger than most. So I certainly think, again, I would concur with you that the idea of trying to get some of this incorporated more specifically into the plan is. I would concur that that's a good idea.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Maeve, I believe, um, I, I'm familiar with the, the count they did on the trees a few years ago and if. Memory serves me correct, it was just a lot of parks um in public spaces that that count was.
Correct. So the inventory that we have, that we've completed historically is only on public land, park property and right of ways and that's. That's also, to be clear, that was not, uh, it was not comprehensive of private property. But it also was completed by volunteers from the tree committee and other volunteers that supported it. Um, we did have one of our recommendation goals of the urban forestry master plan was to, was specifically to update the inventory. So that we could then assess, properly assess our, our canopy. Um, we can pull GIS data and we can, we can make some. Um, uh, analysis statements based on that. But um our, our goals for our canopy coverage are identified in the plan. And in fact, I just pulled the plan up and we, we mentioned canopy coverage over 54 times. So it is a pretty. Strong goal of ours, obviously, so.
Yes, Commissioner.
But that's all on public property and right of ways.
Correct.
Not on the private property, so.
Correct. We don't, we do not, for this plan, we did not identify um private residences or private property, correct. Um, I will say the third to last line in the um forestry plan does speak specifically to. The forest being beyond just one individual tree. Um, and there's some poetic statement, which of course I have 20 pieces of paper in front of me and I can't remember off the top of my head. But the gist of it is, is that they are calling out that we are not just one individual tree and it is an entire um urban forest. And that includes the entire city. But again, in our inventory, we do not um reference the private properties.
Thank you. Commissioner McGren.
So Maeve, do, do you believe based off of the comments you've heard here uh related to trees? Do you believe that the current urban forest plan that we have addresses those?
Um, I do believe that it addresses the trees in a broad, the urban forest specifically in a broad spectrum. It makes reference to the plan, to the urban forestry plan. It makes reference to the plan, to the urban forestry plan, so I think that's pretty broad, I think you could absolutely strengthen it by adding a few key words about preservation of trees. There's a couple of chapters that I think it would help, I think in well, let's see here, I think it's chapter eleven, just as though Heather had mentioned in the development page, or the development section, there's an opportunity for perhaps, you know, identifying what the heritage tree is in a definition, but also I think the word preservation for me would give more clout, if you will, for when I move forward with the changes in the urban forestry master plan. So one of my goals in the urban forestry master plan is, I have a directive to revise the codes, and we have an existing code right now in chapter fifteen that speaks to heritage trees and the process, but it doesn't give a definition. And there isn't a definition in any of our codes or any of my arboriculture manuals from back in two thousand and three. Or we don't have it defined in the urban forestry master plan either. The urban forestry master plan is also quite high level, and so I do think that particularly when you're thinking of land use management, if we were just beef that up a little bit by adding keywords like preservation of trees and reinforcing that. Now, throughout the document, I, I, you know, I was with Amy and we've been going through the comp plan. There's no doubt that the community is supporting the urban forest and trees and they value them. But I do think anytime that you can have that language, it would be helpful. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't phrase any of what could go into the plan, so if you're thinking that direction, I would defer back to Amy for the language and, and have a few minutes to work the language out, but.
I have a question for any of staff who'd like to chime in here.
I just wanted to. So I mean, I think the challenge that we've all been faced with through this whole process is that we know that there needs to be specifics, we know this is a high level plan. And that, and we've been kind of like guided that the implementation piece will get, get us to the specifics. And so, you know, I don't necessarily want to slow the process down, but I also want to make sure that we're addressing the needs. But I do think that, that the point in time to get specifics on defining a heritage tree. Do we need to do that in the comp plan, or do we need to do that in the implementation and update the code? Right, so I don't, that's where I'm kind of stuck right now is, is do we, do we, do we do it in the comp plan, or do we do it in the actual implementation portion of this next kind of iteration?
Well, the, the implementation plan is part of the comp plan, it's not a separate document.
But it's still very nebulous, it's very high level, right?
Yes, and it, but it, and then it trickles down to code.
Right.
It trickles down to code, so if we do feel strongly that it should be included, now is the time to do it. And when we're looking at, you know, by code, we're, by law, we're supposed to up this, update this plan every ten years. You'll notice the date on the last one is fifteen years approximately ago, so it, the plan's going to be here for a while, so if we're worried about is it September, October, November, December, when it gets done, that's small potatoes compared to it's going to be here for at least ten years, so we better do the best we can, yeah.
Thank you.
Were you gonna say something else? Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So I, the
Commissioner Dunkle is speaking, for the record.
Um, I don't sound like, like myself lately, sorry. One issue with, with this that I have is that we're, we're moving into new territory with the private property component, which is very contentious. And like, there's not enough time to list all the reasons why that could hang up this plan for a long time, even further than what just our, our need for time period to pass for public comment and to review and to write up new stuff. Am I wrong that maybe the urban forest plan would be the, the area to target? For amendments or updates or new information to be added specifically to that? In, in the coming so my understanding of this could be it could take a significant amount of time to come up with a plan that that we liked, that the staff liked, that the city residents liked, that was meaningful and could get through council without counsel caving in. If people testified for or against it. So a significant amount of time, which if we're waiting for this specific thing for the comp plan, then we're looking at it won't be December, it'll be next year at least, so. I know the urban forestry plan was just done not very long ago. Comp plan moves forward with the current forest plan. What's to say that the urban forest plan could be amended, updated? Maybe we can say it's a document that is not perfect, like every document. And then it's time to review it immediately, and that could be maybe one of the modifications. As the addition of that, would that change what we could do today as far as moving the comp plan forward? I guess I'm asking whoever.
Well, and I, I have a question to follow up on that, that I was gonna ask, but well, that question, first of all, I think that, that just to adds clarity, I think, to what you're saying is that I, I think what we're talking about when we're talking about the urban forest and, and identifying heritage trees and, and a lot of this stuff. Predominantly, it will still pertain to public land.
Hundred percent, yeah.
But one of the things you noticed in, in, in a lot of the language that came through on some of the suggestions from the public was that while it can't be required on private land, we can have verbiage to incentivize it on private land, so it would not in any way be requiring anything of anybody on their private land, but there would be incentives for them to participate in this kind of program. And I guess, and then my question I was gonna ask of staff was, do you see a, do you see a way forward, a, a meaningful way forward to have an incentivization of some of this stuff to expand it beyond just our public land?
Yes, and what we can do is come back to you with some language. We could probably do that for your next meeting. Then you would review it at that time and decide whether you wanted to schedule another public hearing on the plan.
Okay. In my reading of the crowd here, that sounds like a, a, a good way forward, I think, is to propose that we postpone this so that we can get the language to beef up some of the elements that are related to the urban forest. We have lots, lots of documents that have been added to the record this evening that city staff can look at, they can ask questions of us and other people around to, to get that language to what we think is proper, and then at our next meeting, we can review it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly, Mr. Dunkle.
Is there an answer to my question from anybody?
I, I, I have some, something that might help. In the urban forestry master plan on page fifty-five, there's a couple bullets at the very beginning that speak specifically to new site development proposals and encouraging preservation, and then developing guidelines for reviewing tree selection and or location aesthetics, et cetera, et cetera. But I think the, the very first bullet on page fifty-five that speaks to review new site development proposals to maximize tree planting and preservation opportunities. That's where that word preservation, if we could identify preservation on the comp plan side, I think then we're beefing it up i- in both areas, and, and then on my side, on the urban forestry side, we'll move forward with what this next step is as we implement this plan.
And correct me if I'm wrong on that, but along the same ideas, what you're asking is that in the comp plan is a legally required document. The urban forestry plan is not, correct, so if it's in the comp plan, it has more meaning than if it's only in the urban forestry plan. That's my take, would you concur?
I guess I'd be arguing on the opposite end of that for the, with the same reasoning that the comp plan gets walked all over routinely. And not to say that that's what I'm saying should happen, but we, we definitely see it happen fairly often, in my opinion. And, and I don't believe that the comp plan is a specific way to to get into this topic, because I would reiterate, getting into how we manage private trees is going to be a contentious argument. There'll be a lot more people here opposed to it because we'll be telling people how to manage their own trees. And whether they're heritage trees or not, and I'm, I'm somebody that is an absolute tree lover. There's nobody here that's a bigger tree lover than me for many reasons, but understanding that as far as public trees, the city does a very, very good job, in my opinion. The city isn't chopping down trees for no reason, the city is not able to maintain every single tree to what it would take, but it's very expensive. I think that adding public, uh, adding private into the comp plan is gonna create a, it's gonna be a snowball effect where it's gonna turn into a lot more, and I don't think it's an easy thing to put down in, in just a short amount of time. And be able to get it through, because then that'll be, we're gonna create a situation where people are gonna, gonna come up opposed to this. What we, that we, what we add to it. Now, also, I'd like to add that a lot of the development that we've seen since I've been here, most of the developers are going out on their way to maintain trees into inventory room, and trees are in my mind taking precedent over, not over just about everything as far as site planning, so. Uh, and, and in some cases, trees that definitely aren't heritage trees, and it definitely is adding a lot of cost to projects. But that's their, their right to do that if it fits in with, you know, city code. So I don't, I don't share the the idea that, or the thought that, that there is a tack on trees as far as that they're being removed unnecessarily, or they're targeted for removal because of development. Uh, in fact, I think it's the opposite of that, which is a good way to go. I, I go back to if we're, if we're going to try to beef up the plan based on public trees, hundred percent. I, I feel like we're already there, but if there's language added as far as heritage trees or more emphasis on maintaining the trees that are in the public space. That's easy to do, but as soon as we cross that sidewalk over into the private area, it's I don't think it's gonna go that smooth, I think it'll take a significant amount of time, and I do think, once again, I think that that language in the urban forestry plan opens the door for, you know, that document can be added to without it, I mean, it's, it pretty much says uh, let's build a plan. So it opens a door, I think, maybe, maybe not legally, but I think it does. That there's more to be done with that plan, and if it is a document that is living, it should be able to be added to and, and made better. And if it is part of the comp plan that we pass, which I guess it's already part of the plan anyway. It's part of the current plan, right? Technically, so I think that's the avenue to go, and I think it gives, gives us time to, to really hammer out exactly what the participants and the audience have wanted, and I think we come up with something a lot better.
If I may.
Yeah, yes, Commissioner Boyd.
Um, I disagree, Commissioner, I think, um, I think what I've am hearing from the audience and the participants is just, is stronger language in the comp plan, since that is, if you will, the constitution of plans for the city. I don't think it hurts to add another goal. You have the top two, and it's about encouraging, you know, developers, it's encouraging people, it's not enforcing any sort of language, that language is not in there uh, to begin, to begin with, so I don't think it would open anything more than what's already there, as far as encouraging best practices of planting trees in urban areas, I mean, we're not telling people to do that, we're just encouraging it, and that would be the same thing with an another goal or two of just emphasizing the importance of our urban forest, our heritage trees, our canopy, what have you. Because that, this is the plan of plans, and I think to add one or two goals to encompass that. I don't think it, personally, I don't think it would cause a big rush of dissent in the city.
So the number, the number one point of the seventeen by law is private property rights. And that's why, and that's why it's number one, is people care about that. And the trees are a part of their property, the trees are their property. I, what, what part of the, of the plan right now is in opposition to tree, to forest, urban forestry, or to what part of the plan is also like removing the ability to, to, to go to, down the road with with getting into private areas? I mean, if the private areas aren't really mentioned, doesn't that open the door for us to be able to create a bridge between public and private trees? Because we can't treat private trees like public trees. The public trees that the city owns and maintains, we have the right to deal with those. However, the city and, and the residents decide to do, but individual trees on individual property owners, they're not, it's not gonna be as easy, it'll be a thousand different battles or a lot of support and some battles. And, and it won't just be because of people wanting to develop, it'll be because the tree scares them. The tree worries them in the windstorm, the tree looks like it's dying, there, there's a, or the, the tree has a disease that is an issue, and there's, and the, does the city have the means to send people out and go through a process to decide if a tree that actually is a heritage tree, or if a tree is in trouble or distressed? And how it should be removed, and what should happen to it after that, and if something gets replaced with it? This is a, this is a large amount of work to put this together. And it, and it won't happen in a short amount of time without more people showing up to, to pick it apart with reason. And frankly, I'd probably be one of them. Because it, urban, if we say forest, it's not exactly just a tree. It's a site, the ground, what's around it, other trees in the area, the exposure, the soils. All the things around it make up a forest, so the tree specifically is is, uh, the, the desired result is a healthy tree that has a long life and a good location. Frankly, in a city, it's a very tough location for a tree to grow. There's all kinds of things that are in the way from it thriving, so the trees that are doing well are special, I agree. And a lot of them are in the right of way, there are, a lot of them are in the public area, and a lot of those look you know, they're the significant trees in the city, some private areas do have significant trees too, but not not as many as what the city has, so I would, I would challenge anybody to say that, you know, the comp plan as it's presented to us right now doesn't do things to protect, if it mentions canopy and it mentions all this stuff, it doesn't mention private. Granted, but the go, crossing over into the private area is, is even though if we would like those goals to happen, it's gonna be either met with opposition and not finished and not followed through with because of the challenge, or we won't get the desired result because it'll be too difficult. And therefore you know, not effective. Unless it can be done in a collaborative way between, you know, some of the people that are here, us, city staff altogether, and I think it could take a while. I think it could, I mean, a year for something to be done very well. And I think, I think that it could be part of the, the urban forest master plan, which I do feel like we kind of dropped, maybe, maybe that was missed at that time when that was going through, and that's the appropriate time for that to happen. When, uh, then it would be included in this, and it would be we would be able to see how much of an issue it was to try to make it go through. Uh, so my, my, my hangup is not with protecting trees. Protecting trees and and uh doing the right thing as far as the best thing that we can for each situation. My my hangup is that when we get into the private area, it's gonna be an issue.
Thank you. Uh, I guess the only thing I would add to that is that. Did you have something?
No, go ahead.
And and that was just the notion that anything, anything we're talking about with private. Is strictly voluntary.
Right.
There's no requirement, what we're talking about doing puts no additional requirement on any. Private property, it incentivizes private property owners to follow some of the rules or. Or or goals, I should say, so. Um, yeah, and that we're saying, yes, there could be, could be incentive, that's one of the things we want to work on, but. There's no, I don't, haven't heard anything proposed by any of us or anything that we've seen in the documents. That is talking about putting any kind of additional layer of regulation on a private property owner. It's just incentivizing them to help us achieve these goals of a larger urban canopy. And a more diverse urban forest and all the goodness that comes with that.
Yeah, I I didn't hear conversation about um stepping into the private sector, and we all know we don't have purview for that, and. We can always communicate with staff, legal if necessary, I understand Moses saying. Um, but the public has spoken. You know, would have appreciated a little bit earlier in the game when our meetings were so lonely. But I do appreciate um the effort that people have made um coming in and calling in. And you know, that bears out a little bit more work for the commission. We can sort out this other stuff with. Um, private sector, as I just mentioned, and move on and do the right thing by the citizens in the city.
So, as part of our deliberations then. Um, if. Well, will we have several options here? We can move forward if someone would like to make a motion that we. Okay, first, I'm not, I wasn't asking for a motion yet, I was gonna try to prioritize some things, but go ahead.
Uh, Chairman Hastings, I just thought maybe what I would share with the commission is what the plan currently has. Um, where it does talk about the urban forest. Um, because there are numerous places that it does already discuss it. And it actually does discuss uh private property. Not with, that doesn't call it private property, but. Uh, goal number one is ensure that new housing and commercial developments include tree planting and or. Tree preservation. Uh, what I'm hearing the commission say in terms of the comments you're you've received is. Do we take that and add some more? Um, items in the implementation table to talk about in, you know. Look into incentives for tree preservation. Um, and again, that there's many different ways you could do that. But that would be the first step would be. Um, what what are ways to incentivize tree preservation?
Can we approve with that modification?
Uh, to, let me just pull up, I'm just gonna pull up.
We create that language right now and.
Mission tables. Okay, here's our implementation table. Uh, where it appears currently is in. Chapter three, community character and design, urban forest. Current uh summary of the implementation is implement the twenty twenty two urban forest master plan. Including updates to title seven, chapter fifteen, urban forestry, as may have noted that. Code was adopted in two thousand eight and is in serious need of updates. A a comprehensive tree inventory and a five-year strategic management plan, so those are already things that we are. Looking at implementing, we could add another line item for urban forest of explore. Uh, in, explore codes, programs to incentivize. Preservation of large historic trees. And through that, we could define heritage tree. So it it actually doesn't take a major change, we could probably do it with one line item. In the implementation table. If that's what the commission is thinking, it's needed.
I like that. Is that a, is that a compromise that? Well, I'll, that's a compromise that I would be in favor of because I think it opens the door for. More discussion with staff and and people in the community to make a plan, and it opens the door right there to. Do something good and we can move this thing forward.
But, thank you. Um, what would we all want to see in this language?
What Amy said.
Well, we talked about an incentivize, some.
Yes.
Some incentivization program for private land. We talked about specifically a definition of what is a heritage tree. And we already have a heritage heritage tree listed as a, as a thing, and it's it's in the plan already, so it's just coming up with a definition for that.
Code, code, that could be, you know, setback um leniency or something to to say of a tree.
Do we want it? Language that is specific, I'm just saying, I mean, that could come up further down the road, but in this document, is that something that you think should be there?
I I think from what Amy outlined within adding a line in the implementation plan. That specifically outlines that these specifics around uh incentivizing. Tree preservation needs to be developed and addressed within code. Um, because, again, I go back to my previous statement about our document, right? It's a very high level document, and for us to continue to. Add these very minute um items, we could spend a long time doing that, and the document can grow very large. To the point of, it currently says preservation of trees. Yes, agree, it could maybe be a stronger wording to it, but it says preservation of trees, which is, I believe. What we're trying to achieve here. In this whole discussion is, let's preserve trees, whether the private or public, let's try to preserve them. And if we need to preserve them on the on the private side, let's create incentives that allow people to do that.
And I agree entirely with that, and but from my own comfort level, I would wanna see that verbiage before I. Send this plan on to city council.
Yeah, yeah, maybe, I I don't know if we can approve with modifications tonight, there there is an option for that here, or if we need to postpone.
In terms of the options listed there, option two is the thing I'm looking at, and that's with.
Why? So I would want to live in here, so I think that um if you guys make a material change. To the amendment, there'll have to be another public hearing, and I think given, I hate to be the lawyer in the room. But given the amount of um, I guess. Conversation that we've had on this, I think that we're we're flirting with material change, and so I think it's probably a good idea to send it back to staff. And have another public hearing on it, if if that's what we're talking about, making these types of significant changes. With Commissioner McGrann, I just wanna comment on your um proposal to. Put in the code, in the plan that that we're gonna alter code. I think that's probably a little too specific for the plan, I think the purposes of the plan really are to keep it at thirty thousand feet, and if it directs the city to. Initiate code that preserves trees, I think that gets a little bit complicated legally, and so I think it's better just to just continue to uh. Incentivize preservation of trees, I think that's totally doable, we can definitely work with that language, but as soon as we. Drive changing code, I think that gets a lot more.
Yeah, just to clarify, I was talking about the implementation plan. I think that the comp plan is as is, we get more specific within the implementation matrix table.
Commissioner Hastings.
Yes.
Um, from our first speaker, I just need some clarification on this. Um, made a recommendation of a plan to include exceptions on setbacks to preserve trees. Can't that be done through conditional use?
I don't believe, not currently, it cannot. And that's the the challenge that we will have coming up with this code language is. If you. Say you granted a variance for someone to have lesser setbacks to preserve a tree. The property sells, and the new owner decides to cut down the tree, what? What do we, we now have a structure that's noncompliant, we allowed it to be noncompliant. Um, so it's just, I, I think there's tools we could come up with, but. Or if you do this, then you have to do a deed restriction, what, I mean, there's a lot of. Details that we would have to to flesh out before we could come up with. Specific code language.
Right, and. Close enough.
Those, that's, it wouldn't be like putting a sidewalk around a tree like we have.
Just depends on the level of detail of the ask, I can vaguely remember. Conversation and the comments and writing.
And quite honestly, that could even almost be important, I mean, when we talk, we have been kind of focusing on incentivizing. Uh, achieving some of these goals on um private land. But we could also say incentivize on public and private land, so that, I mean, there would be the, there would be the option that. That might allow um more flexibility with some of these things uh without being specific, because that's not the intent of. Comprehensive plan, but um that there might be more flexibility with some of that stuff, depending on how the wordage of this comes down.
Yeah, I agree.
Do we have further deliberations, or are we at a point where someone would like to make a motion?
Clarification.
Yes.
Into the implement implementation plan.
Part of it.
You're looking at putting wording into the implementation that. Implementation part.
I think at this point, we're looking at putting language into the comp plan itself. And if there needs to be corollaries then, that would go into the implementation plan, we would like to see that as well. That's, I mean, that's me speaking, does that sound? A little bit of a summary of what we've heard.
Well, I'm in, I'm into one. I'm into one as is.
Oh, okay.
Personally, if you wanna know.
Yep.
We, and I say that because I think, I think there, I've heard enough to. Be totally satisfied that I think everybody's goals could be implemented in a. In a positive way because we've heard testimony, we've heard. I've heard that there's avenues to make that happen, and we could approve it. I'm kind of on that frame of mind if I wanna approve this, cuz. I think the first meeting I ever participated in, we talked about this plan, and that's a few years ago. And I think it's a good plan, I, we, you guys have done very well.
Mr. Chair. Can I make a request? And we've talked a lot, we've we've heard from the public. I know we've been going at this for a while, but I'm I'm wondering if in a limited basis, we could reengage with the public to ask for their. Input based off of our comments that we've had up here.
That would not be normal protocol, but we can ask.
We can do whatever we want.
Legal.
I, I think you can do whatever you want, but I think it's probably a bad idea.
Okay.
I'm kind of where you guys are leaning towards right now.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm open to hearing a uh motion from anybody. Are you ready?
I am ready.
Excellent.
Chairman. I move that the City of Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission postpone a recommendation on the final draft of the comprehensive plan to city council. Until it can review changes related to urban forestry to to the urban forest segment of chapter three.
And specifically, do we want to?
And specifically about.
Okay, well, that's okay, well, that that could come, do we have a um?
So much we talked about.
Do we have a second to this motion?
I'll second it.
Hey, then we'll have some discussion on it. Before we vote. And that's the only thing that I would get to, is if there should be some specifics added to that, that we want to see incentivization of tree preservation. And it could be that general, we don't have to say public or private, but we want it to include both. And if staff gets around to coming up with these words, and they think those words need to be there, then we'll put those words in, but. We will have an opportunity to look at that language when it comes to us. Um, the the other thing too that came up a bunch, do we want language in there? Well, we certainly want to add the definition of a heritage tree, do we wanna? Talk about anything more upon a heritage tree program might look like, or just say that we would like to have a heritage tree program.
Not that specific.
Yes, Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry, just, we don't need to dwell into the specifics other than.
No, but we just need to give direction to city staff. Um, what kinds of things we would like to see in the language that comes back to us. But preferably at our next meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think the only thing I'd like to make sure is included in the definition of a heritage tree.
Yes.
Is uh. Like us all, uh, we all have an expiration date, trees do too, um, and I just wanna make sure that, you know. If there is a tree that's identified that is dying, uh, that there are an avenue to be able to safely remove that tree. With some sort of, you know, requirements, so. Um, yes, we wanna preserve, but there comes a time when it makes.
We also, yeah, we need to be certain that we can remove hazard.
Yeah.
Trees when.
Chairman Hastings.
Yes, Commissioner Kent.
I'm not sure if the process is still in place, but I have some experience with a tree that was matured out. On a piece of property that I owned in the city, and I. Came to city hall to ask for the, what the process was and appeared in front of the tree commission. Um, I think it was on, we had one hearing and then one decision meeting. So I don't know if that process still exists, but it did, and it worked that one time. It did exist and worked for me, because it was a public safety. Issue, yeah. If that helps, Ben.
Yeah, as long as there's an out, um, cuz, yes, we wanna preserve the trees, we wanna be safe about it, too.
So in our discussion, is there anything else that any commissioner would like to see included?
Mister Chair, if I may.
Yes, you certainly may.
It's unusual that we would have at the comp plan level, start getting into definitions of what is at more program policy and procedure level. I would suggest if you want reference to heritage trees. And we have that in code and and other places in the city, but in, if you're wanting to. Define heritage trees, that's typically done in policy and procedure, it can go back and be revisited. When you start defining something in the comp plan, you're talking a long-term plan here, you can't go back and revisit that if you missed something. Six months later or twelve months later, you can do that when you do it through policy and procedure.
And can it, does that same apply to the implementation chapter itself?
You wanna stay at that that higher level, you're gonna get into the detail, and you're gonna weigh the pros and cons of. Implementation strategies and definitions as you get into the specific. Next steps of the implementation plan, the implementation plan is kind of your. Your guidebook for where you're going, and all of the details as you get into that implementation is going to occur at that point. I think we can accomplish what you're looking for with the preservation uh. Language, if you want reference to heritage trees within that as well. Um, the discussion about incentive, but I would suggest when you're starting to get into definitions of what is a heritage tree. Just like when you're going to get into what are incentives, we want to consider. What are the pros and cons of those? That would be when you get into implementation.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
On the first sentence of the comp plan under urban forest, can we just change? Uh, second sentence, the presence of old into heritage. So the sentence would read, the presence of heritage and new trees contributes to the community character that is valued by residents and visitors. Instead of the presence of old and new trees, et cetera. I mean, it's.
There, Commissioner Hastings.
Yes.
There was some language in the um public comments about um definition of heritage. That seemed appropriate, old and heritage being two different things.
And I think what we're hearing from staff is right now that. Something as specific as a definition in some of the documents that were given to us is something we want to avoid in the comp plan, that there's another place for that. But this is, this isn't it.
I understand that.
Okay. Um.
So I guess my um. My motion would be specific to, under specificity, specificity would be tree preservation.
Tree preservation, incentivization and heritage, but just that without a definition.
Right.
I'm confused. Where are we at?
Well, we have a motion to delay, postpone this action until we get language that strengthens the urban forest part of this comprehensive plan and specifically looks at incentivizing preservation, recognizing heritage trees. And there was one other. Or did I kind of?
I think you got it.
I got them combined there somehow.
This is just a general review.
Yeah, and we're looking for some language to come back to us that will accomplish those objectives.
Good.
To strengthen the urban forest portion of this plan. Are we, are we clear enough on what we're voting on? Yes. Okay. And from what we have said here, does the city staff who would be doing this, do you think you have enough direction from what we have said?
Yes.
We haven't put you in circles.
So can, can I hear the whole motion again? Because it says there was a motion made in a second, and then there's been a bunch of discussion after that with additions, add infinitum, which is not a motion.
Which is what? Well, that is the discussion part was to make the, the additions to the specificity of the motion. So that.
I think we're out of order.
Well, no, because if a motion is made, then we have discussion on it. So if it is a formal amendment to the motion.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, so we're looking at a formal amendment to the emotion, to the, the motion.
Melissa can clarify.
Chairman.
Yes.
I believe it's all one motion is what I'm hearing is that there was discussion about what would be included in Commissioner Boyd's motion. So, and you could restate the motion with those items.
I'd appreciate that.
Okay, I will do that for you, Commissioner. I move that City Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission postpone a recommendation on the final draft of the comprehensive plan to City Council until it can review changes related to the urban forest chapter and specifically tree preservation incentives language in which to include language to of with the addition of heritage trees. Right?
Yeah, to, to include review of language.
Yes, or to include language of heritage trees. Read my handwriting.
Do we need, uh, is that still the original motion? Or do I need a second to this one? No, we're good.
Chairman, I believe that was a restatement of Commissioner Boyd's motion with those details, and you have a second from Commissioner Campbell.
Excellent. So I suppose we should take a roll call vote on this?
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunkle?
No.
Commissioner Camp?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner McGrann?
Yes.
Commissioner Benner?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we proceed with the next item, may I request a brief recess, please?
You certainly may. We'll be in recess for five minutes.
We also would like, I'd like to know when the next meeting would be for hearing this.
Make sure. Will it be on the 18th or is that the next? What's the next? No.
Yes, so that next meeting is two weeks from today.
But this hearing won't be that.
The hearing will not be them. That will be bringing the language back to you.
Thank you. Brief recess. Thank you. The meeting here of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is reconvened. And we have another item on the agenda this evening. And that is considering of an application for a short plat subdivision, city application number PSP 23-0002 to divide existing unplanted land into two lots, one of which is a flagpole lot as defined by Sandpoint City Code 10-1-7-S. The subject property is addressed as 615 North Lincoln Avenue, parcel number RPS 056200C001TA. I misspoke earlier, and as a short plat, this application does not require a public hearing, but adjacent property owners were notified and have provided an opportunity to comment pursuant to this meeting. Action by the commission will be a recommendation to City Council, and there is no additional opportunity for the public to speak on this agenda item this evening. We will proceed with this item, starting with an introduction of the applicant application by city staff, followed by an explanation of the request by the applicant. Please note that commissioners should address their questions to the applicant at that time. I will now ask for confirmation from each commissioner that you have had no ex parte contact and that you had no conflict of interest pertaining to this request. Commissioner McGrann?
No.
Mr. Boyd?
No.
I have none either. Commissioner Kent?
No.
Mr. Dunkle?
No.
Excellent. I will now yield the Florida City Planner Amy Tweetin for an introduction of this request and explanation of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a request to divide the parcel at 615 North Lincoln into two lots. As proposed, the second lot is considered a flagpole lot because it does not meet the zoning frontage requirements, but is allowed by Sandpoint City Code Section 1017S. Flagpole lots do not require a public hearing, but notification of proper adjacent property owners. And action by the Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommendation to City Council. These are two illustrations. To the right is the actual survey of the property. To the left is just an approximation illustrations of what's being proposed on the ground. Again, this is the proposed subdivision. Lot, want the entire lot would be divided into lot one and two. Lot one would retain the existing structure and lot two is what is referred to as a flagpole lot. And you will see that it has 26 feet of frontage on North Lincoln Avenue. As proposed, the division results in fewer than four lots. These are not applications you typically see. But because it is a flagpole lot, it needs review by the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. Short plats are reviewed under Sandpoint City Code Section 10-2. And I will just go briefly through what those requirements are and the findings based on what was submitted. Again, you can do a short plaque if the property is within the corporate limits. If it is on a existing dedicated right of way. However, there is the ability to request additional dedication of right of way and a short plaque cannot create more than four lots. This property is within the corporate limits. It is on North Lincoln Avenue, which is categorized in the urban area transportation plan as a rural collector that has requirement for 60 feet of right of way. The current street only has 40 feet of right of way. So you will see the requirement for additional right of way dedication in the conditions of approval. And it is only proposing the two lots. Again, it qualifies as a short plaque. A short plaque cannot be further divided using the short plaque process. That's basically saying you get, you can divide a short planet for lots, but you can't divide it further. The subject property is a two lot short plot of unplanted land. There is no adjacent land owned by the same people. If there were, they would have to include that in the short plaque. That is not the situation here. All lots, the short plaque must comply with minimum standards for the zone. Lot one of the lot meets the minimum frontage and lot area of the RM2, RM District. And lot two has the minimum required frontage for the flagpole lot, but it does meet the lot area. And again, the discussion on when you have the land division, you may require additional right of way dedication. This is just the code referencing the flagpole lot provisions and the applicant is proposing what would be called a flagpole lot with the flagpole of 26 feet in width. The RM District lot, and then looking at the request per zoning, the RM District allows structures accessory to principal structures, has a minimum lot area of 5,000 square feet, lot frontage minimum of 37 and a half feet, front yard setback of 15 feet, side yard setback of five, rear yard setback of 15 and maximum lot coverage for structures of 40% and impervious surface of an additional 40%. The proposed land division would have two accessory structures on the lot two that is being created without a principal structure, and those would need to be removed before the final plant. The lots do meet the minimum lot size and lot one is within the maximum lot coverage for the existing structures. The proposed short plaque proposes a five-foot right-of-way dedication and with that still maintains the sufficient front yard setback. Lot one is currently non-conforming to the south. Their side yard, what's considered their side yard, and the land division would not change that status. And lot one would maintain sufficient side yard and rear yard setbacks. And just showing you the survey again, you'll see where the existing structure does not conform to the side yard setback here on the south property line. As noted, the short plaque does not require a public hearing, but it is sent to adjacent property owners and agencies. Comments received, we received are from the assessor requesting minor changes to the plaque, and those are included in staff recommended conditions of approval. IHD made the recommendation of a dedication of 10 feet of right of way versus the five. That is also included in the staff recommended conditions of approval. And then we had comments from neighbors with concerns about traffic and parking created by additional housing. Again, the request for you is simply a subdivision request. There is no proposed building permit at this time. So based on a review of the application to the requirements of titles nine and 10, and the comments received, staff recommends approval of the flagpole short plaque at 615 North Lincoln with the following conditions of approval. An inspection of the existing multimodal asphalt pathway adjacent to North Lincoln Avenue will be performed at the time of building permit application. If damage during construction associated with building permit repair of the pathway will be required. The existing accessory structures, the deck and shed shown on lot two of the preliminary plaque shall be removed prior to final, final plaque approval. Removal of the quote less right of way from below lot area information for lots one and two. Applicants shall add a note to the face of the plaque that reads, buildings shown on lot one are recognized as existing non-conforming structures due to their encroachment into zoning district setback. Again, that's along the south property line. Buildings on adjacent lots within 10 feet of the plaque shall remain depicted on the final plaque. General note number A revised to read, the purpose of the survey is to subdivide that parcel described in warranty deed instrument number 1006283 into two lots as shown. And the two Bonner County Assessor comments indicate that to show the acreage minus the right of way and indicate that the street is North Lincoln in the owner's certificate legal description. And then finally, based on the IHD comment, show the dedication of additional five feet of right of way for a total dedication of 10 feet pursuant to Sandpoint City Code 101681. That is all I have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff at this time?
No.
Commissioner Mose?
Please. What's the square footage minus?
Right of way? What is the square footage minus the right of way?
Square footage might, hang on. Open it up again. Minus the additional right of way?
Yes.
So the additional right of way would be five feet. I'm trying to find the 100. So it'd be 500 square feet less between the two lots. So lot two would lose an additional five feet along the frontage as would lot one.
So it said the current street width is 40 feet?
Correct.
But it's supposed to be 60?
Right, as a rural collector, the planned right of way for that street is 60 feet. 60 feet of right of way. And that's where the 10 comes. So it's 40 feet currently, and you would ask for 10 on the west side, 10 on the east side.
And then the sidewalk too?
There's that existing multi-use trail and that will remain at this time.
If the street did get widened, would that trail still be viable?
Likely if the whole street were widened, it would be a different cross section.
Would the existing house still meet the setback?
It would.
With the trail and everything?
Well, remember, the trail is currently out in the right of way. So if I
Okay.
If I pull up, if you look at this one. So the trail actually is in the right of way.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Yes, Commissioner Kim.
Did I hear you say the street would widen 10 feet to the east?
What I said was the current right of way is 40 feet. The the design of the rural cross section is proposed at 60 foot right of way. So when someone comes forward with the land division, that's our opportunity to request additional right of way. So we try to, if, if say it were a 50 foot right of way and we wanted to get to 60, we would require five feet and five feet. We're in a situation where we only have 40 feet of right of way and we're trying to get to 60 feet. So we're asking for 10 feet of right of way from each, from the east and the west.
But in this case, you only get 10 feet of the property, the subject property?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. It's kind of an incremental as we're going.
That's a, yeah, it's a 10 foot right of way, and I would imagine it's a very lengthy process before you end up getting 10 feet on both sides of the road down the whole street.
This is a very narrow street. And people park on that path sometimes all the time.
All the time.
I lived at 620 North Lincoln for a period and that was the challenge, getting down the street. It gets to be more and more that way because of, you can see this parking lot. That's probably at a time where the organization that I'm part of had an event there. So I can understand the neighborhood's concern about traffic and parking because it's, it is a legitimate concern. But I don't see how adding this lot makes much difference with that because they would be off-street for sure, since they would use a driveway. I would assume to get to their property.
I know I brought that up earlier. That's one of my pet peeves, and that's the location that I often think of is like, why do we allow people to park on sidewalks? And we don't, but it's just not enforced terribly aggressively. It is enforced, but it's not a high priority. That's my understanding of it. And we don't, but it's just not enforced terribly aggressively. It is enforced, but it's not a high priority. That's my understanding of it. Any other questions for staff before we hear from the applicant?
I have one more question. So the. If, if the, the pole part of the property, the driveway. Would, are they limited on what kind of surface they can lay down? Like an impervious or pervious is there? Because that would. They have to keep maintain the five foot setback from the side yard still on both sides?
Yes.
So that narrows it down to sixteen feet. For actual road surface?
Right, and there, there's requirements for fire access, a minimum of twelve feet, I believe of. The, the surface will have to support. Fire apparatus. If that structure has any part of it more than a hundred and fifty feet from. Where the fire truck can access.
With a long driveway, if it was, if they used up the whole available space, they could. Get closer to that forty percent. Coverage. If the driveway is concrete or pavement. Am I wrong?
No, they could get close to forty percent, definitely.
All right, but that's all in the permit.
That's looked at at the time of building permit.
Mister Kim?
One last question on, on the ten feet. The owner gives up on the east, does the city at that point go in and make it street?
It depends where that street is. If, if we have all the right of way where the street is, is in, in the line of capital projects.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? If not, then I will yield the floor to the app, for the applicant's presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners. Jeremy Grimm for the record, owner of Whiskey Rock Planning and Consulting. Not much of a presentation tonight, just because it's a fairly benign request. The staff report was super thorough, very concise. Amy and Sarah did a great job and. We concur with the findings. We are agreeable to the conditions put in there and. You know, Mister Fitzgerald and Mrs. Fitzgerald are simply looking to meet the intent of the comp plan, look for areas for infill. Where efficient housing can be built in the, in the town in this lot at. Boy, it's almost fifteen, almost sixteen thousand square feet right now, so. Commissioner Dunkle, once the additional five feet of right of way, so a total of ten is given. Lot one becomes six thousand nineteen square feet and lot two eight thousand sixteen square feet. And just for context. Doesn't really matter to anything, but for your understanding of how these projects go. The city was great on their side, but this, this started last August. That's when I signed this contract. So that's how long these things take to go through the surveyors and get the comments back and respond and all that stuff. So it's a long process and the Fitzgeralds are hopeful that you support this request.
I'd entertain any questions.
Commissioners, have any questions for the applicant?
No.
I just have one in that. On a flagpole lot like this, when we talk about setbacks from front of the house, rear of the house. Is that at your discretion? Is that at the designer's discretion or does, I mean?
No.
But I define. When we're tucked back in a corner like that, can I define what is the front of my house? What is the back of my house? Or does it have to be where that pole driveway comes in?
Traditionally lots on flagpoles, the, it's, it's the primary street they're coming off of. So this will have a Lincoln address. The setbacks are established by code and those would be, that would be the front Lincoln and then we would meet the side rear and front yard setbacks within that lot.
Portion of the house that even though there's a house in between there, but the portion of the house that'd be facing Lincoln, that would be the front of the house.
Correct.
I was just.
Technically. And Commissioner Dunkle asked about the driveway. So it's, it's only structures that have to meet the setback for that twenty-six foot. Flagpole section, and there are ways to put impervious surface and other things, but we don't expect to approach the forty percent limitation.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
At this time, the commission will deliberate. No new information may be provided and questions may only be directed to city staff. Deliberations, fellow commissioners.
Everything's good.
Looks good to me.
Pretty straightforward.
Anybody ready to make a motion?
I move the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standard of Idaho code and Sandpoint City Code. Approve with the staff report conditions, numbers one through nine. The request by John Fitzgerald for a flagpole lot. City application number PS two three dash zero 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 two. At six fifteen North Lincoln Avenue. RPS zero five six two zero zero C zero zero one TA. This motion is based on the analysis and facts contained within the staff report. Comments received and the finding. That with the stated conditions, the application is in, in compliance with the requirements for a flagpole lot as outlined in. As outlined.
In.
In Sandpoint City. Sorry, I can barely see.
It was a typo in here.
I was hoping it was. Proceed, Sandpoint City. One zero dash one dash seven dash S and short plats according to one zero dash two. And that staff has allowed the notice procedures applicable to short plats contained in Sandpoint City Code. One zero dash two dash seven.
I'll second.
Do we have a second? We have a second? Okay, discussion.
Just for the record. Most said allow, not follow.
Where was this?
My second to the last sentence, plants are plats according to ten dash two. That staff has followed the notice, not allowed the notice.
I would remember.
Follow the notice procedure. Gotcha.
Do we need a second now?
Yes, we had a second already.
I'll second, a second time.
And following.
There we go. Roll call vote?
Sorry.
Commissioner Dunkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Camp?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Benner?
Yes.
Commissioner McGrath?
Yes.
Motion passes. I would like to thank everybody for attending this evening and with no further business, before the commission, this meeting is now adjourned at seven fifty-five PM. Thank you again.